2021 Meeting of the Watertown Board of Education. Dr. Parlato?
This evening, we would like to offer a moment of silence in memory of Mrs. Barbara Russo, a longtime teacher at Griffin and South Schools who passed away last week. Mrs. Russo was a true kindergarten teacher, filled with love for the youngest learners and appreciation for the joy and delight those children brought to school every day. Mrs. Russo understood the magic of the first year of school for both children and their parents, and she celebrated each child's achievements as they learned the basics, as well as how to play and have fun with their peers. Mrs. Russo was beloved by her colleagues for her kindness toward, care for, and dedication to her students, the school, and the school district. Let us have a moment of silence for Mrs. Russo at this time.
I ask that we all please rise as Mr. Makowski leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Mrs. Davidson?
Mr. Makowski?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Crotty?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Malgouty?
Here.
And Ms. Lindstrom?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Moving on to item D in the agenda, do we have a motion for the regular board meeting minutes from December 14?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the minutes of December 14, 2020, regular meeting as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the second special board meeting minutes from December 21. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the minutes of the December 21, 2020, special meeting as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item E, report from Student Council Representative. Natalie?
Good evening, everyone. John Trumbull, the teachers and students at John Trumbull are happy to return to school after winter break. John Trumbull's staff is eagerly excited to welcome students back on the 19th. The staff has been working diligently to make sure that the students return to a loving, safe, and engaging learning environment. They want to thank everyone for the continued support during remote learning. Polk, at all three elementary schools, students participate in daily What I Need, When time. This 30-minute block is structured so that students receive targeted instruction or intervention in an area of identified need. Just before the winter vacation, Polk students participated in a growth monitoring assessment using iReady, and teachers met in professional learning communities to review data and determine focus areas for the next round of when. Even during virtual learning, we are pleased to be able to provide such targeted and personalized instruction for our learners. This past fall, Polk introduced the concept of being the change to our students and highlighted children for demonstrating great character traits, such as being respectful and honest. This practice has continued during distance learning, and students have taken it upon themselves to email in nominations for their teachers to recognize the hard work that is being done each and every day. During daily morning announcements, it is a privilege to share the names of the students and teachers who have been recognized for being amazing. Remote learning continues to go relatively smoothly despite its obvious challenges. Teachers and students are all rising to the occasion and working their hardest to make the most of things during this time. They have increased the use of tools such as breakout rooms to provide small group support and increase student participation and engagement. In addition, Polk is working hard to help all students participate fully each day and have all hands on deck. Paraprofessionals, building subs, interns, and tutors all see students and provide direct support. Judson, Judson students are doing fantastic work and deserve to be recognized. Each week, our teachers nominate a student in their class who exemplifies a model virtual learner. Such qualities teachers are looking for are great effort, participation, attendance, and task completion. On Friday mornings, the students' names are shared out as morning announcements. Judson leadership team met this week to build upon the STAR program so that it can be utilized in either an in-person or remote learning model. More to come. Remote learning is still underway. Judson teachers and families continue to do a nice job with navigating this way of teaching and learning. We are hopeful and excited for January 19th return to in-person learning. We miss everyone. A letter was sent out to all families on Monday, January 4, reiterating the importance of attendance during remote learning. It is so important that our students log on daily to receive the instruction required to achieve grade-level standards. Prior to the winter break, iReady progress monitoring was given to our students. By analyzing this data, our teachers have been able to create enrichment and intervention groups for our daily When What I Need block. Swift, just because we can't all be together at school doesn't mean we can't all join together in some learning fun. The Swift sixth graders finished off their first trimester in their family and consumer sciences class by making mug cakes and smoothies in their home kitchens. Students proudly showed off their creations via photos sent through Google Classroom, and we were happy to see so many families joining into the process as well. For many of these students, this was their first adventure into the world of cooking and baking, and they were very proud of their creations. All Swift students continue to benefit from two programs, iReady and Newzella, that provide lessons for students at their own levels in math, social studies, language arts, and science. Newzella supplements concepts taught by the classroom teacher and also helps reinforce reading and writing skills across content areas. iReady supports our math curriculum with targeted lessons for both reinforcement of skills and concepts, as well as enrichment for accelerated learning. We are grateful to the district for supporting these initiatives. Watertown High School, the high school administration completed their 2021 to 22 budget, as well as the slides to present to their colleagues with their budget priorities. Students are continuing to propose new clubs and to create virtual events for existing clubs. We are so glad to see students continuing to engage in school activities as best as they can. Dr. Parlato worked with Mrs. Feckety and Mrs. Lewis on the new homework helpline, which will be introduced soon for all students to access in grades K through 12. High school administration and teachers met with administration from the Student Services Office to plan for student needs for this school year, as well as the upcoming school year. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges communicated with the high school that our five-year progress support is due at the end of March. This report asked this high school to evaluate its progress on all the recommendations that were made from the accreditation visit in October 2016. We'll begin composing this report so that it's completed before the March deadline. The CIAC Board of Control met this week about mitigation strategies needed for winter sports, with additional guidance forthcoming about whether the winter season can begin or not on January 19. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Does anybody have any questions for Natalie? All right, thank you again. Moving on to item F, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report. Dr. Parlato?
Thank you very much. As the school has mentioned, I too cannot wait to reopen our schools on Tuesday, January 19. We are actively processing applications and paperwork for substitutes so that we have coverage in each building as needed. As a reminder, Tuesday, January 19 is a late arrival day for teachers' professional learning, so that day is a two-hour delayed start, meaning that school begins two hours later than the regularly scheduled time. Also, as a reminder, grades K-5 will attend to school each day, and 612 will be on a hybrid schedule, with last names A to K coming into school on Monday and Tuesday, and last names L to Z coming into school on Thursday and Friday. As Natalie mentioned, we are excited to begin the homework helpline, and that will be coming up beginning on the 19th. That will be from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening, and students from K to 12 can log in for live help with teachers on Google Meet. So that's super exciting, and we hope people take advantage of it. We had two important surveys go home this week. One is if you want your child to be a voluntary remote learner, and the other survey is for grades six and seven families who have a child with an IEP, and that one is due on Wednesday. The Watertown Public Schools Mascot Committee held its final meeting last week, and tomorrow I will present the committee's recommendations to the board during a special meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the work of the committee members, who spent a tremendous amount of time examining and discussing the ideas and issues related to the current WHS mascot. Their work is a testament to the value of productive dialogue, and I look forward to tomorrow's presentation. And finally, we are one other finally. We are moving along in the budget development process. Each school and department has finished its budget, and tomorrow administrators will present their school and department budgets to each other, which is the next step before putting the entire district budget together. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions for Dr. Parlato? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to G, items of discussion. Proposed calendar change. Dr. Parlato, I believe you have a recommendation to eliminate a professional development late opening.
Yes, so, and I can't remember the exact number of the day because it's not in front of me, but the February 19th or 17th is one of those days is scheduled to be a late arrival day. But because it's a Wednesday, it's also a early release day. So that doesn't make sense to have a late arrival and an early release on the same day. So we're proposing that we eliminate the two-hour delay, the professional learning session, and just leave it as a regular arrival time, but early dismissal as we have on Wednesdays.
Okay, and that's February 17th, so regular school day for early dismissal and no late opening?
No late opening on the 17th of February, yes.
Do board members have any questions in regards to this proposed change?
No.
All right, seeing none, we can move on to item H, our capital improvement plan, and I'll flip it right back over to you, Dr. Parlato.
Thank you very much. This evening, I have Mr. Fiello with me, and he is going to present to us some capital improvement priorities that we have in the district. I'm going to share my screen so that we can see what Mr. Fiello will talk about. And... Mr. Fiello can begin.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, good. So you're looking at is the overview. So the overview of this evening's topics is John Trumbull primary, roofing and flooring, the Swift Middle School, artificial turf and roofing, and then we have the Watertown High School with the artificial turf track and roofing projects. So those are the areas that we're looking at right now. So I think I'm going to read through my narrative that I wrote. I think I shared that with Leslie and Janet, I think. I'm not sure who else has copies of it, but... So basically, I'll start with John Trumbull. So the low-slope portion of the roof, we're talking about the flat roof, basically. So there's two options there. There's a restoration option, and there's also a retrofit option. The restoration option consists of thoroughly cleaning, doing any repairs that are needed, and coating the roof with a two-part epoxy. And that's the range that you see here, the dollar amount. Then option B would be a retrofit, and that's a complete replacement of the existing flat roof, which is also low slope. And then, and that range is, you know, the $750,000, $900,000 range. So, you know, in both options, all the flashing, all the ductwork, any issues that are with the roof currently will be repaired in both options. One's a coating, and one's a replacement of the actual roof, its membrane itself. So those are the two options for the roofing on the low slope or the flat roof for John Trumbull. Okay, thank you. So if you go to the slope shingle roof, that would be replacing all the existing shingles with new architectural shingles, with 30-year warranty, and that's your $1.92 million range. And option B would be to put a standing seam system on, a metal roof. And that's kind of like what's on the building now in certain areas. In the back bus loop, the main core down the main building, that's all standing seams. It would be that type of a system. A little bit more money. Also has a 30-year warranty, but those are just two options I put out there for you folks. And then, if we go to the next one, okay, so the next one is the flooring. So... The John Trumbull School, because of the way it's broken up, it lends itself to be a phased project. It doesn't have to be done all at once. And I think by phasing the project, I put year one and year two. It really could be broken down as you like it to be broken down. But the pods and the way the school is broken down physically lends itself to be a phased project. And I think, and we keep the school open, we don't have to shut it down. Like, for the summertime, we could keep the building open for the most part and do sections, you know, section by section throughout the building. And that would be just replacing all the VCT tile in the whole building. The VCT is getting, it's old, it's 20 years old. It's starting to break up in certain areas of the building. It's been patched multiple times. So I think at some point, it's going to become a trip hazard and maybe a safety hazard. So I think at some point in time, we need to dive into that and see if we can get that project in place.
Just to add to your point, Mr. Fiello, that the John Trumbull items would be 22 years old.
Oh, 22 years old?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Makowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Fiello, a quick question. So the estimate of $250,000 per year to do the flooring, does that have any type of buffer in there in case, once the floor is ripped up, that there's anything found in the subfloor issues that have to be repaired, things like that? Is there a possibility of that being?
As far as I... I guess the big underlying question is, is there any asbestos in the adhesive or the material itself? And the answer to that is no, because the building was built in 1999, whatever it was built. So I'm not worried about any asbestos, but any fractures in the floor, they would get flash patched as the floor is getting ripped out. Before the new floor would go down, they would flash patch it.
And that's something that is accounted for in the estimate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, Swift, we're going over to Swift now. Okay, so for Swift School, the roof was installed in 2008 from the best information that I was able to achieve. And for this year, the roof needs a good cleaning. It has some masonry conditions that need to be addressed. I put in $25,000 in my operational budget to get that roof to where it needs to be. But for the future, going forward, it's going to be just a few more years before it's ready to be replaced, rather. So option one is a roof restoration. Again, thorough cleaning, power washing, all the repairs will get done. It'll be coated with two-part epoxy with a 10-year warranty. Option two would be a retrofit, similar to John Trumbull. And the retrofit would be just to strip off the single ply and replace the single-ply roof. And option three would be a complete replacement, ripping it down to the deck. But these are a few years out. If we maintain the roof like we need to do this coming up summer and spend some money on the roof, I think we could get quite a few more years out of the roof right now. But I wanted to bring this forward because it was in my ramp reports, Roof Asset Management Program Report. So, and, you know, it's going to be coming up. So it's somewhere in the capital plan, it's got to show up so that we know it's coming down the road, if that makes sense. Okay, good. Then, as far as the artificial turf, it's roughly $400,000 replacement, and that's really just ripping up all the carpeting, basically, what is the actual artificial turf itself. The elimination of it, they take it and they have it restored, and all the rubber pellets, everything's included with that price tag. Now, I did speak with Paul, and he would like to make a few changes on that field. I don't have his changes in this dollar amount or not any changes that he asked for, but we have been going back and forth trying to figure out what he wants to do there. But he did have some ideas about changing the way that field is laid out.
Through the chair?
That would be Paul Carter.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Fiello, real quick, what's the estimated life left in the Swift turf? How much, you know, how much time do we have left before we're going to have to bite the bullet?
The Swift turf didn't test badly, but it tested poorly. It's pretty much done. I mean, within the next year or two, I think it needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Are you referring to the impact testing that was done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Did you get copies of those lessons?
I have them, but if board members haven't received all of the impact testing and all of the photographs and all the details that go along with this, we will make sure that all board members receive that.
Okay, that would be great. Okay, Watertown High School. So... The Watertown High School is a... There's a situation there with the high school as far as the roof is concerned. Approximately 22% of the roof has wet insulation underneath the roof itself. I don't know if everyone has seen that. Ms. Crotty?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Has everyone seen the copy of the report from the high school, the roof?
No, they have not.
They have not, okay, okay. So there's quite a bit of water between the deck, the steel deck, and the actual membrane itself, approximately 22%. There's a retrofit budget here, and that consists of going over the existing roof with the base sheet and modified mineral surface on top of the existing material. And then there's a replacement, a complete replacement. And you'll see the budget number there, it's at 3.9 to 4.1 million. On the replacement piece, there's no dollar amount built in there for the mechanicals. And when I say mechanicals, every exhaust fan, every air conditioner, all the piping, all the exhausts, everything has to be raised to meet the half-inch criteria. So to get state reimbursement, which I believe you guys get 60%, to get that 60%, you'd have to meet all the new codes, which is a half-inch pitch. So now you're talking about craning all the equipment off the roof onto the ground or moving it around the roof and then putting it back in place, building it all back up. So this is a roofing number. It's not, it does not include the crane or mechanical or any of that stuff in this particular number.
May I ask, what's the difference between the length of warranty on the option A and B? I see option A is estimating to give us 30 years. What would complete replacement give us?
Same thing, same thing, about 30 years.
Okay.
Through the chair? Mr. Fiello, so wet insulation kind of sends a shiver down my spine. Is there any impact to the inside of the building where we're talking mold concerns or anything? Or is that the deck is sealed, so this is just kind of an in-between? We're not going to worry about a remediation situation?
It's a great question. So typically, mold will grow on a cellulose product. You know, it needs moisture, it likes living in the dark. So it's a great question, it's a great concern. In my experience with the galvanized steel deck, and they usually put on a membrane on top of the steel deck, and then your insulation goes on top of that membrane, and then there's another membrane before the roofing goes on. So it's probably locked up in the insulation. I don't expect it to be an issue as far as health issue or anything inside the facility itself. And if there is any mold under there or outside the building, it's pretty much staying outside the building. And when that gets cut out, it will be remediated at that time. And that's basically just power washing it with bleach. It's not really, it's not a huge, it's not like an asbestos or any of that type of remediation.
Well, right, and as long as it's exterior to the physical building, so to speak. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that shouldn't be an issue, no.
Through the chair? Hi. If we did option one, though, that would not fix the low-slope problem, correct? So would we continue to get water in there, or?
We're still in the high school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole roof is all low slope.
I understand, but in option B, I think you said complete replacement of the low slope. So that would be fixed, right?
Well, okay, so option B is really ripping off the entire roof system itself, down to the steel deck. Option A, or option one, is just to take out the wet areas.
Oh, okay.
Replace the insulation in those areas. Do all the repairs, all the masonry work, all the drains, everything will be done. In both options, all that stuff will be taken care of.
Okay.
The only difference, option two is it's complete removal of the entire roof system.
Okay, thank you.
And again, in option two, according, you know, if you want to go for the... For the state dollars, I think it's 60%. You'd have to follow the criteria of one-half-inch pitch, which, you know, you travel across 100 feet at a half-inch pitch. The roof is going to, the roof's going to change drastically as far as the way it's built, and, you know, you have to put more drains in, move the equipment's got to get moved around, et cetera. Okay, so we're on the artificial turf. Okay, so I'm going to start with the track because the track is about 20 years old, which I did not know. But after talking to a few folks and dealing with AstroTurf, is the folks that I talked with that have been taking care of the field for some years, what we have is a lot of reflection up through the asphalt. So the asphalt has spider cracks in it. And these cracking, it's like when you have an old driveway in an old parking lot, the cracks, they reflect up through the actual surface. So to respray that track would be a waste of money because it will still reflect and crack and peel apart. And what we're proposing here is to do a complete removal of all the track, all the asphalt, put a new base down, redo the asphalt, and spray a new track down. And that should last a good 15 to 20 years. I mean, I think this one's about 20. But if we take care of it, it should be a good 15 anyway. As far as the turf is concerned, we did the G-force test, the G-max test, and the turf is very poor. And I'm going to say, like, it needs to be replaced. And it's probably a safety issue at this point. Yeah, here's your low options and high option costs. You're putting $6 and $12 million. You know, if I was to just throw my two cents in, if that would be okay with Ms. Parlato?
Sure.
I think our highest priority, from my perspective, the high school roof and the high school track. I think those are things that just absolutely need to get done. Those are priority number one and two, in my opinion. We have some time on some other things. I think if we do some good repairs over at John Trumbull, now that we know where the wet areas are, I think we can get John Trumbull straightened out. Swift, I think if we do the repairs on Swift that need to get done, I think Swift will be okay. But as far as the high school roof, I mean, the high school roof needs attention like right away. And the high school field, it's pretty much on the edge of not being usable. Any questions, guys?
Do you know, the board, if it wasn't included in the documents that the board received electronically from Center Office, we will make sure that they get all of the documents that you have worked a great deal on. Mr. Fiello has provided photographs of all the different areas of the roof for board members, got into great detail as where the problems are, how they perhaps got to where they were, what kind of patch jobs have been done. It's very detailed, including the impact reports on the fields. So to summarize, Dr. Parlato and Mr. Fiello, you're saying that, which is a big surprise to me, that John Trumbull's roof is not the highest priority, that the high school is actually in worse condition than that and more urgent. And then the second priority, in addition to the field, would then be to go to the Swift roof? Is that what I'm hearing?
The Swift roof is actually in pretty good shape, but it needs some attention. So I presented in my operational budget, actually, I added it in today and I sent it to Janet for tomorrow. for tomorrow's discussion, but I had a $25,000 amount to deal with the Swift roof. The bulk of the Swift.
Does that include the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The bulk of the Swift roof is really great shape. It's got a lot of problems around the perimeter, some flashing issues, some through-wall flashing, some drains. You know, it, it needs attention.
And does that include a preventative maintenance program for the roofs in your, in your upcoming budget requests?
Yes, it's already built into the budget. I believe, I believe it's already there.
I will say, through the chair, related to the high school roof, it's important to note that the renovation to the high school was in 2010, was completed in 2010. That's not the roof we're talking about. So the 2010 roof is where we were able to install the solar panels, because that was a relatively new roof. So the roof that Mr. Filet is detailing is the, the roof that's quite, quite a number of years old.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification, thank you. I didn't mention that, but yeah, the, where the additions were done, those roofs are EPDM, they're good, they're good solid rubber roofs. There's nothing wrong with them at all. This is just the old building, the original building before the, before the additions and modifications took place.
Okay. Do board members have any questions? Please.
I'm sorry, quickly, I know you said you want first priority with roof, track, and then the turf. I'm just trying to understand where that's gauged, just because you're making me nervous when you're saying it's not safe.
Well, the, the, the G-max test on the turf itself came up very poorly. Like, it exceeds the limit. So right now, that, that turf is not really usable. And it's mostly in the center of the, it's mostly in the center of the field, where most of the play takes place when the kids play football and stuff. Around the perimeter, it's not too bad, but the, the center part of the field where the kids actually have play is, is in poor condition. And it's only wise to do them both at the same time. If you're gonna tear out the track and tear up the asphalt, tear up the field, it would be wise to do them all together.
Just, okay.
Now, as far as the track is concerned, the track is not, I don't think the track is a safety hazard yet, but there's a lot of cracks in it. And I didn't realize until I went and I went and inspected it myself with the folks at AstroTurf. We walked through the whole track, you know, and it's in pretty poor condition as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Parlato, would you agree maybe that if we propose to give the board members a chance to go through all of the documentation, review the slides from tonight? And then if they have, you know, we're gonna have follow-up questions and, and probably, and we're gonna need a facilities and maintenance committee meeting in order to make decisions on, obviously requesting bonding, because we don't have a capital improvement fund. And that's the way these projects are normally done in, in our town. So, unless there's any other questions tonight, I think we should, over the next two weeks, take questions from board members as they review all the documents and plan for a facilities meeting. Does that sound appropriate to everybody?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair?
Please.
Through you, Madam Chair, just one other question. Will there be timelines on each of these as well? Or is that possible to do to kind of help us figure out? This is obviously for the next fiscal year budget, but do you have a scope at least of thinking how long some of these projects might cost? I mean, excuse me, how long they will last to, to implement? I don't know whether that will help us in our decisions or not, but it was, if, if it's possible to have some timeline, this is a three-month project, this is four weeks. I think that might be helpful as well.
I could definitely give you guys that information.
Thank you.
I think the board, sorry, I think the board will find that the documents that Mr. Filet will present and share with you are unbelievably detailed and filled with all kinds of information in terms of even showing exactly where it's wet in the roof when they did the infrared scans up there. So I think that I agree that there should be a facilities meeting once everyone gets to the, all the meat in those reports, because there's plenty to tell in there.
I agree, that would be great.
Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I could ask you, you, you have all the documents, correct?
From the meeting that we had when you first were doing the testing, I have those. But if you want, I don't know if you've added anything to it since then?
I may have, I may have changed my narrative a little bit. My, my narrative is dated 11/18, so it was November 18th. I'm not sure when the last time we met was, so.
We're, okay.
I can resend it out.
If you resend it, then we'll be sure that the most up-to-date, because I'm not sure that all of the impact testing was done at that time or completed, so, you know, whatever you have as most current would be helpful.
That'd be great, I'll send it out to you, I'll send it to Janet?
Perfect.
You want to distribute it? Okay, I'll do it that way, okay.
Thank you. Dr. Parlato, anything else on the capital improvement?
No, I think that you'll see the documents will speak for themselves.
Okay, and then I would assume that, I'm gonna assume, and I know you and I have discussed this, that we're gonna have an update to the five-year capital improvement plan where we will see these projects updated on the existing plan that we, that we worked on. You know, it's interesting that, you know, a lot of this was predicted, but not so much the high school roof. So I appreciate all of the work that you have both done to bring this to our attention and to give us all the information that we need to move forward. So if there are no other questions on the capital improvement, any board members, any other questions? We will move to our first round of public participation, item I on the agenda. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? And if you do, please state your name, address, and topic of discussion. Okay, do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item J, communications. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair. The board received a letter on November 23rd from Mr. Brian Flaherty. Dear Ms., dear Dr. Ramos and Chair Crati, it is an honor to have the opportunity to serve the Watertown Public Schools on the Board of Education. I want to inform you that I will not take part in the discussion, debate, or votes on the future of the Watertown High School mascot due to the appearance of a conflict of interest. My wife is employed by Robinson and Cole LLP, a law and governance relations firm in Hartford that represents the Mashua Tuket Tribal Nation, which has an expressed point of view on the matters of the Native Americans as school mascots. As I have discussed with the board chair, I believe it is in the best interest of all concerned that I abstain from any board action on this matter. If it is possible, can you please forward this letter to all members of the Board of Education so that they are aware as well? Thank you very much, sincerely, Brian Flaherty. On December 15th, Diane Bristol sent a letter of resignation as a Board of Ed member effective immediately for personal reasons. On January 4th, the Board of Ed received a letter from Karen Rubillard and Patrick Finerman recommending that the Watertown High School mascot be changed. On January 5th, the Board of Ed received a letter from Paul Vance regarding his participation on the mascot committee in hopes that the board will make a decision and not defer the issue any further. All letters were forwarded to Board of Ed members through email. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. I would just like to draw our attention to the resignation of Board Member Diane Bristol that, that you shared. We will all miss Mrs. Bristol's presence on the Board of Education. Diane was appointed to fill a vacated seat on the board in late November of 2018 and was handedly elected to a four-year term in November of 2019. She became Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee and was involved in every aspect of the Board of Education's work. In particular, outside of the budget and finance that she was dedicated to, Diane added a very strong voice to the security needs of our schools and for the educational access for all of Watertown Public School students. During her two years, Diane served in her capacity as a board member with such dedication. Her insight, her knowledge, her wit, and experience will be sorely missed. Diane's smile and enthusiasm brightened our boardroom and virtual world. And I know you will all join me in sharing deep gratitude for her invaluable service to the board, to the Watertown Public Schools, to the students, staff, and to our town. Moving on to item K, committee reports, Mrs. Rinaldi, anything from curriculum and instruction?
Yes, Ms. Krati, Ms. Beckett, Dr. Parlato, and myself will meet later this week to review academic project updates.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wilk, anything from policy and labor?
Yes, Madam Chair, custodial union negotiations have begun, and the cafeteria nurses will begin this month as well. Board of Ed will review and potentially vote on the working agreement with the WEA. There's that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Wilk. And while we don't have a board in finance, budget and finance chair as of yet, in a few minutes, hopefully we will, I will just share that the Town Council approved our request to pay the Administrators Union for the additional days they worked beyond their contract in preparation for reopening our schools this past summer. I want to thank Dr. Ramos, Dr. Parlato, and Mrs. Jones for their assistance in this matter, and to the members of the community and the Town Council for their understanding of the need of this appropriation and for making that for us. And there is, we had our update on facilities earlier in the meeting. Is there anything for governance and community engagement, Mr. Mikowski?
You know, reported this time.
Thank you. Just a brief report this evening from me, item L, report from the board chair. As Dr. Parlato mentioned in her report, tomorrow, the mascot committee will present their recommendations to the board at a special meeting that begins at 7:00 PM. In response to a public request from people who have graduated from Watertown High School over the last approximately 40 years to change the Watertown High School mascot, the board established the Watertown Public Schools Mascot Committee to begin a community engagement process that would examine the use of the current Indian name and mascot. So, four students, two current Watertown Public School parents, two community members, two faculty members, the athletic director, two administrators, and two Board of Education members began the four-month process and are now ready to inform the Board of Education of their findings on the matter and to present to the board the recommendations about the use of the current name and mascot. There will be two opportunities tomorrow evening for public participation, both before and after the recommendations are made. I am hoping that the board will vote on the matter at their January 25th, 2021 Board of Education regular meeting. While sharing this process with you is the easy part, the decision certainly is not. And no matter which way the board votes on this matter, there will be unhappy people. While the board tries to make informed decisions based on a thorough and transparent process in which all voices are heard and all things are considered, we will have, people in the community are going to be left to have to live with whatever decision is made. So in addition to speaking to community members, educators, and reading hundreds of pages of testimony, we must focus on how we move forward from whatever the decision ends up being. If we can all agree on one thing, it is that we all love our town and the bonds that we have within it, and the sense of belonging that it gives us. We must work together to come together and create an environment where we are united in wanting to make people feel like they belong here. So those on both sides of the issue can heal afterwards and move forward. Over the past couple of weeks, I personally have called upon many of our town's leaders to be a part of helping to repair the wounds that this matter has brought to our community and to help those in our community unite once again. So while we prepare to hear the recommendations of the committee and a subsequent vote by the Board of Education, let us think about what comes next, how we move forward in the part that each of us will play in that process. We all yearn for human connection and solidarity. And with such a divisive issue, it is imperative that we model what it looks like to unite around similarities while also carefully considering our differences. We must move forward with hope and let this incredibly caring community find a way to come together on this once a decision has been made. Thank you. Moving on to item N, action items, adoption of items to be approved by consent. Item one, consideration to remove the late-day opening on February 17th. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move the board approve of removing the late-day opening for professional learning on February 17th, 2021, from the Watertown Public School district calendar.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa, is there a second?
I second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item two, the consideration of the approval of Mr. Robert Mikowski as the Budget and Finance Committee Chair. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board appoint Mr. Rob Mikowski as the Budget and Finance Committee Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? I would just like to thank Rob for agreeing to take this on right in the moments of the beginning of the board's part of the budget process. I am completely indebted to you on that and look forward to working with you in front and behind the scenes on that. And I am extremely grateful for you being willing to dedicate additional time now to this as well as what you already do on the Board of Ed. So thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Mikowski.
Thank you.
Moving on to item N, future agenda items and board member comments. Do board members have any items for future agenda they'd like to recommend? Or any comments they'd like to make at this time?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, I just, I want to thank you and the Secretary Rinaldi for reading my letter from November into the record. I didn't want any questions or doubt that, where I'll be tomorrow, because I, I do think that out of abundance of caution because of the appearance of a conflict of interest that I should not participate in the debate or the, or the vote. When the vote is held, I will abstain at that moment. But I do think it's, it's appropriate for me not to be a part of tomorrow's discussion lest anyone raise any questions. And I appreciate the opportunity to have a letter in the record and to, to comment tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty, and I appreciate your transparency and coming forward and letting the board know and also wanting the community to understand. And I appreciate that, I know a lot of thought went into that, so thank you. Do any other board members have any comments or future agenda items they'd like to suggest? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item O, our last round of public participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Just unmute yourself and begin talking. Okay, hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board go into an executive session for the purpose of a discussion regarding the working agreement between the Watertown Board of Education and the Watertown Education Association, and a discussion regarding the incoming superintendent of schools contract. Attending the executive session will be Dr. Janet Parlato, Leslie Krati, Janelle Wilk, Kathy Rinaldi, Brian Flaherty, Josephine Rosa, Cindy Eastman, Jason Malaguti, and myself, Rob Mikowski.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll let the public take time to log off of the meeting, and we will begin executive session in just a moment. I do want to let the public know that we will be going live again once executive session is completed.